Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, August 12, 7:02 PM. And we have a series of committee meetings tonight. And the committee of the whole, then followed by Transportation, Finance, and City and Safety Services. Our first presentation is by Mr. Aaron Dogras, who is here as the Regional Representative for us from the 2020 census. So if you'd like to come to the podium, welcome tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I first start by saying thank you, City of Athens, for having this census appear today? And I've got a brief presentation prepared for you here to go over some of what the census is going to look like in 2020, some new changes, things of that nature that we've partaken in, how the city can really be a partner in that process, why we do the census, and then, of course, how we can all have an impact in our communities. And just trying to get the slides up for you guys. Are they in front of you? Is that what it is?
They're on the screens to the side for us.
Oh, there it is. Just now. Looking at myself for a second there. All right. So here's the agenda, right? I'm going to go over the goal for 2020, why we have that census, and then the updated 2020 census design, as I had mentioned, and how each and every one of us in this room can actually make a difference. So, and in the end, what I hope is that all of these communities here that you see on the screen, whether it's the City of Athens, the County of Athens, whether it's the State of Ohio, Governor Dewine's Complete Count Committee, or the United States Census Bureau, can actually share in that one goal that we're going to talk about. And that one goal is simple. It's to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And that impact really hits home for every single individual living in the City of Athens. And why is it that we have that census? Well, it's mandated under the Constitution. Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution demands an enumeration every 10 years of the census to count everyone residing within the country, and that's changed over time. The first one was in 1790, under the supervision of Thomas Jefferson, and was actually conducted by federal marshals on horseback, which just isn't convenient today, right? I luckily didn't ride in on a horse for my work today, although that'd be kind of fun. And then it's changed over time. As technology has changed, the census has changed. In 1970, we adapted. It was the first time we had the mail-in form, which is what a lot of people think of when they think of the census, is that mail-in document. But even that has changed over time. Even though the mail-in form still exists, we've adapted. In 1990, we added the ability to respond by the telephone. And then today, in 2020, we're going to be focusing on pushing people to respond online for the first time in the history of the census. And there's a lot of reasons for this, right? It's going to save a lot of money at the federal level by not having to have enumerators at every single door, trying to get people to respond in person. That saves a ton of money, which means more money back to our communities in the long run. And this can be a huge education piece as well, is there can be distrust in government, and people don't want government entities knocking on their door. In the education process and awareness process of alerting people, it's simple messaging this time around. Hey, if you don't want anyone showing up at your door, well, respond online and you get that invitation, or go onto the phone and respond, or respond by mail, and no one will ever have to show up at your door, right? So people who don't like anyone showing up at their door, that's a nice way to kind of sell that piece. Now, when it comes to the census data, we use it in a lot of different avenues, a lot of different areas, right? Everyone is directly impacted. The first, as mandated in the Constitution, is for apportionment. And the map that I have on the screen right now shows the results of 2010, where the State of Ohio, due to that count, actually went from 18 representatives in Congress down to 16. So our representation at the federal level is directly impacted based off of getting that accurate count and making sure everyone is counted in the census. And that ties directly into redistricting. But it's not just redistricting at the federal level for congressional districts, but census data is used at every single level of government. The wards of the city here are determined based off of those census tracts and census blocks. So getting an accurate count really impacts every level, whether it's, you know, city wards, or school districts, or our federal representation. And then the big one that impacts every single individual living here in the city is funding. There's over $675 billion in annual funding that comes from the federal government to states and municipalities. And that goes to everything from things like community development, block grants that fund revitalization in areas, to school nutrition programs, school nurses are determined based off of that funding, including SNAP access, Medicaid access, student funding, student loan funding as well, all dictated based off of that. And then finally, planning, okay? When it comes to planning, not just for cities and city growth and potential that city planners will use it, but even in the business community, they will use census data for planning. If I want to open up an Applebee's on a street, I want to know how many cars are driving by, how many individuals I have as a potential client base. So to find that, we use census data. So the business world uses it, as well as city planners, city managers, and regional developers. Now, in 2020, we have changed the designs, as I've alluded to a little bit. The first thing we had to do is establish where to count, right? So that started in January with our local update of census addresses that went out to every county in the state, and that county then fulfilled their duties and responded back with updates. And those updates looked at things like new developments or torn-down developments to make sure that we have an accurate address list. And that's the only time Census Bureau ever shares our address lists as well, and that's with that Luca outreach that took place earlier in the year. And then on top of that, we take that information that comes back from the counties, and we compare it to the United States Postal Service data that we have available. And then we do what is called an address canvassing event as well. And right now, as of August 4, we have actually had census personnel in the field verifying new addresses, new developments, taking a look at residents that might have been a single-family occupancy before, that's now been converted into four rentals, trying to get as accurate of an address list as possible so that we get an accurate count in 2020. After that, we have to actually motivate people to respond to the census, okay? So that starts by educating the population, the "what's in it for me" aspect of the census. Every single individual living in our cities is directly impacted because every single individual uses services, right? Law enforcement services, fire services, EMS, roads, bridges, not just other funded programs, but all of those things directly impact the day-to-day lives of every citizen living within the city. And educating people that that impact exists can do a lot to raise the attitudes of citizens and get people motivated and energized to respond in 2020. Once they start that response process, we've got to actually do the count, right? So in order to do that count, 95% of individuals will receive an invitation in the mail at their home address. That 95% will then be invited to respond online, by mail, or over the phone. These invitations will come about March 12. On the week of March 12, those will start to go out. People will be given a couple weeks to respond. At that point in time, there will be follow-up mailings that go out, encouraging people to go online and respond, or to respond via phone, or to request a mail-in ballot. And then finally, they'll start to receive phone calls if they do not respond. And in the end, come May, June, July, we will start to actually send enumerators to the door, to the homes or the residences that did not respond. But that's 95% of the population, that's how it'll be done. 5% will actually have their invitation hand-delivered. Now, these are individuals who do not have a residence, do not receive, or do not have an address at a residence where they receive mail. So they may receive their only mail through like a post office box, things of that nature, live-in group quarters. Those individuals will be counted on-site. This also includes things like the homeless population. There will be three days at the end of March where we will have enumerators in the field, counting homeless, where they receive services, or where they may be sleeping, whether it's in a encampment or under bridges. So a key part of that process is sharing that information with the bureaus to where we can find these individuals, so that they get adequately counted. And then less than 1% will be counted in-person by a census enumerator. And this takes place in situations like rural Alaska, northern Maine, as well as Indian reservations that have specifically requested the Census Bureau to come count on a single day to get everyone counted in those communities. But this is a very, very small percentage of the population. After that, we have to release the results, okay? The results are released to the President no later than December 31 of 2020, and then to Congress no later than March 31 of 2021, for apportionment reasons. And when I say "release the results," I want to be very clear about the information the Census Bureau shares. All of the data that we collect, personally identifiable information, is protected under Section 9, Title 13 of the U.S. Code. We cannot share any data that we collect about a specific individual with any other government entity, anything I was talking with the mayor earlier, we cannot share that information with landlords, okay? None of that information is shareable. As a matter of fact, as representatives of the Census Bureau, as employees of the Department of Commerce, we take a lifetime oath to protect that, any information that we come across that's punishable by up to $250,000 in fines and up to five years of imprisonment for every violation. If we keep, we take this so seriously, we can't even share personally identifiable information with colleagues working within our same region unless there is a specific need for them to know that information. So everyone's information is protected and secure. What is shared, and what does eventually go public, is statistical information, just general information that cannot be traced back to a given individual. So now, how can everyone in this room really help make a difference in the community? Just having a clear partnership with the Census Bureau to help that education process goes a long way into making sure that everyone is counted. What I've got up here on the screen right now is a list of the most undercounted populations that the census faces. And the first one up there is children under the age of five. On average, the Census Bureau has an undercount of about 0.7% across all demographics. But when it comes to children under the age of five, that's actually a 5% undercount. It's substantial. It is a major flaw in some of our past counts, and we're working hard to make sure we get every child counted, because that impact is substantial. Because let's say a four-year-old girl here in Athens goes uncounted in the 2020 census. By the time she has an opportunity to be counted again, she will now be 14, 15 years old in 2030, and that means all of that education that she underwent, whether it's access to Head Start, pre-K, whether it's school nutrition programs, whether, you know, K through, at that point, she's now a freshman, so K through nine, did not get properly funded because she was missed in that census count, right? So it has a giant impact. And those programs that she is utilizing won't now be properly funded until 2031 or 2032, when those funds make their way back to the communities. So there are a lot of reasons that children under five get miscounted, and a lot of it has to do with just the traditional family structure has changed over the last 70 years. So you have multi-generational households where grandparents are raising grandchildren, you have shared custody situations, and people don't necessarily know when or where they should be counting them. So to get around some of that, to make some changes, we have included words like grandchildren and grandparents in this upcoming census, so that there's some clarity there, so that grandparents are going to be more likely to know that they should be claiming that child. But it really comes down to an education piece, right? It involves everybody in the community, trusted voices and leaders in the community, helping to educate the community as to who should be counted, where they should be counted. Other demographics here, we have obviously 18-24-year-olds, which is a substantial part of the community here in Athens, as we talked about college students who are oftentimes missed in the count. And as we'll see in a second, the projections for the city struggle because of that when it comes to participation. Oftentimes, you know, 18-24-year-olds are migrant populations, right? So even if they don't go off to college, maybe they're not even in the workforce, and they're moving out for the first time, and they get missed for a lot of those reasons. So making sure that those individuals are counted plays a big role. As well as veterans, non-English-speaking individuals, immigrants, people with disabilities, and senior citizens are also hard-to-count populations that we oftentimes miss, at least that 1%, 0.7% ratio. So how do we find these individuals? Well, the Census Bureau, we have a wonderful tool, and it's on your screen here, and it's called our Response Outreach Area Mapper. And this does predictions based off of past response rates and past responses to things like the American Community Survey, which is the old-school long form of the census that is now taken actually monthly. And what you can, and I know it's a little difficult to see this far away, I should have printed this for everyone here. But what you see here is the darker the color gets, the less likely they are to respond. As a matter of fact, that dark blue here in the City of Athens actually has a low response score of over 30%. That means only 70% of those areas are expected to self-respond in this upcoming census. That is a substantial missed population there, and a real effort has to be undertaken to make sure that they get counted. Where that arrow points on that map is from, I'm pretty sure that's the campus, where you have a, that rate there is as high as 36.8% of that census tract is expected to not self-respond, right? So really educating that population is the impact. And this tool here, this Rome tool, the Response Outreach Area Mapper, allows us to look into these areas in these census tracts and overlay GIS data that's publicly available. So we could overlay school districts into this, we could put streets in here, we could put faith-based communities, and overlay all of that as we try to target and find the best ways to reach these areas. Athens as a whole, honestly, is not, the city as a whole, the best response rate is about 20.1%. That's the best, and I said that kind of backwards, it would actually be 79.9% response, but 20.1 LRS score for the city as a whole, which is pretty bad. So it's going to take a nice effort to make sure that everyone is educated properly to respond in the upcoming census. It just is a poor score, but that doesn't have to be a final result, right? It takes effort now to educate people, is the importance of responding, to make sure that that doesn't come to fruition. And this Rome application, a similar application will be available after April 1. And what that application will allow us to do with our partners is to actually see which areas are responding and at what rates. So active partners are then able to combat some of this and see that, hey, this community isn't responding, how can we go in and better message to that community? What's working here that maybe we missed there? And that's going to be an incredible tool that we're going to have available for the first time in this upcoming census. So how can we work together to make that difference? There's a lot of ways. When it comes to partnership with the United States Census, number one, it starts with things like this, inviting us to your meetings, to conferences, events. If anyone on council, or the mayor, or anyone in the room this evening thinks, hey, there is an organization or a group that should get a census briefing, let me know. I will go, I will do it, I don't care if it's three people or 300 people, I will go to help educate and raise that awareness. And that involves, obviously, introducing us to your community networks. Once again, if you know somebody who should have this type of information, let us know. And then help raising awareness through things like social media, city websites, newsletters, billing communications, community events that are going on, setting up like a census awareness table, and becoming that official partner. We actually have all these tools available for official partners to drag and drop social media messaging like instantly. Everything is already developed, I can send links to council and to the mayor, and I know the county as a whole is using some of this stuff already, that makes it very, very easy to get this messaging out. And then this next one is former complete count committee of elected officials and community leaders in your municipality. What a complete count committee is, and the county has established one, and the mayor's informing today that he's a part of that complete count committee, which is outstanding. Having the city present on that is substantial. It is headed by Chris Schmeele, Commissioner Schmeele, and it is assembled of strong voices throughout the county that are going to be able to help hammer home that messaging and reach those hard-to-count populations. The training session for that is actually on August 22 at 1 o'clock at the Community Center. So I will be conducting that training for the CCC as it goes live. And I can give a little bit more information here in a second on what those actually look like and how they operate. Another thing is, this is the largest peacetime activity that the federal government undertakes. We are hiring 500,000 people across the country, and we hire within communities for individuals to work, you know, within their neighborhoods. So these positions, they pay anywhere from $1,250 an hour to $3250 an hour, depending on the specific position. They are part-time or full-time, depending on the position, and they are temporary, they only last towards the end of 2020. But there are a lot of positions available, and with the unemployment rate, the way it is right now, we need applicants. So spreading the message that we are hiring and we're hiring locally within the communities is important. And that also ties directly into this next one, sharing available space with the census. Because we do hire locally, that means we train locally. So if we hire 10 individuals here in the City of Athens to help with the enumeration next summer, next spring, we're going to be training them here. So any facilities that the city has available or could recommend to come in and do training during the week, by all means, we would love that information, that access to be able to do that. These positions are work-from-home positions. They're not traveling to our local census office, which is actually in South Point, Ohio, because the Census Bureau has adapted its technology. In the past, we had a lot more census offices, because at the end of every day, it was a paper trail, and all those papers had to be taken back and secured. Now everything is done through technology, so people are able to work from home instead of having to travel back to that census office every single day. So sharing training spaces, testing centers, stuff like that is essential in that partnership. Now, I want to take a quick, closer look at that CCC, and I'll be brief, as the city has already begun engaging with the county on this. A CCC is truly composed of trusted voices in the community that are really able to reach all those hard-to-count populations. The goal, or the purpose of a CCC, is to educate, encourage, and engage the community by reaching out to things like grassroots organizations who might best be fit to reach some of those hard-to-count populations, and educating those hard-to-count populations as to the impact that the census has on them. One of the things that I, we alluded to a little bit with hard-to-count populations is things like high rentals, okay? When it comes to high rental properties, educating individuals living in high rental communities that that information is completely secure and safe and does not get back to landlords can really make a difference. Because oftentimes, you know, individuals, especially, we're talking about a college town here, they may have a lease that says there's only three people living in that facility, and they get that census form, they're not going to say that there's 10 people in that facility because they're not going to trust that, right? Educating them to respond appropriately, that that information is secure, will not be shared with anyone, can make a huge difference in response rates as we look at targeting some of those hard-to-count populations. So that's a general look at a CCC. A successful CCC kind of fits this image, and it's actually in the right-hand side of the books that I've handed out to all the council members and the mayor. In the back page, there's a similar image to this that shows a table, and it shows some suggestions as to who would be on CCCs to make them well-rounded. I've also provided you all what they've got, as to how a CCC truly functions in a lot more detail, and some additional information in those folders for your review at a later date, or if you have any questions. With that, I'll take any questions that anyone has. Yes, sir?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The Rome app that you were showing up there, that blue area, that's almost exclusively Ohio University dorms.
Correct.
But I haven't heard you mention anything about Ohio University being involved in any of this. If you want them, well, I'm sorry, I missed it, I was drifting.
No, no, go ahead.
But, okay, I lost my train of thought. God damn it, why do you always do that?
You were mentioning Ohio University dorms, and I haven't mentioned that Ohio University has been directly involved.
Let's wait just a minute, and let him answer the question, then we'll move on to Councilmember McGee. But I would agree with you, Councilmember Reisner, I think the student involvement and the university involvement's essential on that CCC from the very beginning.
Absolutely. And I know the Commissioner Schmeele has made a few contacts and outreach to the university itself. I'm working that angle. I just got on the ground here in Athens in the last few weeks, so that is one of my targets, is to make sure that I'm communicating with the university. If things go right, I plan on stopping in a little bit tomorrow and trying to knock down those doors. I'm sorry.
Councilmember McGee, and then we'll go to the mayor.
Thank you. Just kind of a question. When you're dealing with students who reside at, let's say, in a dorm, but it could be anywhere in Athens, but they claim their residency in a different, say, county where their parents live or something, but they live here nine months out of the year, how is that counted for purposes of funding benefits for the City of Athens?
For the census, it is very clear. Where that individual resides 51% of the time is where they are counted for the census.
Ah, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mayor Patterson, and then I believe Councilmember Carroll, did you have a question too?
Yeah, I had a question slash comment. For enumeration on a university campus with its rez halls, that's a separate process. So part of what you were pointing to, it would be, as I understand it, a lot of Ohio University helping out with that portion of the census, but also in that census tract, as you know, there's also other rental units down there, which would be where we partner with our university, Ohio University counterparts, in being able to make sure we're effectively counting out there. Could you speak just briefly to group quarters?
Yes. When it comes to that, the operations side of the bureau is working with universities directly for group quarters counts, and will do that, oftentimes that can be done based off of manifests, enrollment things of that nature, so they work together to get that accomplished. So that's kind of how that is handled. They're not going to get the traditional invite that everyone else would get in those group quarter facilities, it is run through operations of the bureau. And the coordination is already in, I know they've reached out, at least in preliminary stages, to the university on how that's going to be accomplished. But beyond that, we also need to reach out to all of those rental areas and make sure that students across the board are educated. We tend to oftentimes get a lot of participation from sororities and fraternities who are willing to assist and help spread that message as well, as they're looking for community projects. So I'll be reaching out in those avenues in the not-so-distant future to try and make sure that we're building those partnerships as well with the bureau, so that we can help drive home that messaging and make sure that every student is counted.
Councilmember Carroll.
Member McGee asked my question, which was about counting Ohio University students, and I thought I knew the answer, but it was good to hear it directly from the professional. But I have a little different question about that same issue, which is, it's kind of a fun game we play in Athens, which is what is the population of Athens, Ohio? Now, the answer, one answer could be whatever the 2020 census tells us, or what the 2010 census tells us, but that doesn't really tell the story, right? Because we're including 20,000 students who, maybe if I asked, what is the permanent population of Athens, Ohio? Is there any way to get that data, or do you have a recommendation how communities like ours, where we have this small municipality with a large public university, what we should think of as our population? I mean, should we just go by, hey, they're here 51% of the time, we include all of them, so we're a community of 25,000, 24,692, I don't know, Mayor, what is it? Or are we, I mean, really, we're a town of 7,000, 8,000 people.
Exactly. So obviously, there's some, you know, there's a lot of different avenues that you can look at, and different perspectives you could take. From the bureau's standpoint, the number is the number, that count is the number. And there's a reason for that. Those individuals are still here. It may be different individuals who take their place, but those individuals are still here, they're still using the services that the city provides, they're still using the streets, the bridges, they're still using EMS, fire, police. So that's the perspective that the bureau takes when it comes to that number?
Just to kind of riff off of something else you said, you know, if that Applebee's franchise is looking at car counts, they should be really careful about what time of the year they're counting cars, because they're going to suddenly realize that from, you know, May, June, July, August, they're not making it. It matters. I'm just saying, it really matters, that answer. How big a community are we?
I used to, and this is a side note, I actually used to be a part of the Buffalo Wild Wings franchise in town in a past life, and absolutely, you have to plan in the business community for those flows. And that's why people get questions to the bureau on things like, well, why does the bureau sometimes ask, why does the census sometimes ask, when I leave my house? And it's for planning purposes like that. When it comes to the American Community Survey, you're going to get questions like that, when do I leave my house? And so the cities can plan for that type of thing. When are the streets full, so that they can appropriately plan and develop based off of that, so the businesses can use that information as well. It's not because we're showing up at your door after you go to work. It's for planning purposes and development purposes for both business and public sector.
Okay. We're going to take just a moment or two to see if any other council members have questions, and then if any audience members have questions, we'll allow a minute or two for that as well. Any other council members with comments or questions? Okay. Is anybody from the audience? Any questions? We stand firm to partner with you and help in any way we can, and we'll have some university, if Commissioner Schmeele hasn't already, we've got four or five university people that we work with very closely with the students, and I'm sure we can offer that information with you and get that to you right away while you're still in the community.
That would be fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
And thank you for taking that step to make sure we get that complete and accurate count in 2020.
Great. Thank you. Next agenda item are the, is, the housing regulations and a suggestion for an amendment on the penalties. And this has been made by our Service Safety Director and in conjunction with a committee that he's been working with. And I believe Councilmember Reisner, are you going to present some of that information on the housing regulations?
I don't have anything before me on that. Let's see.
Okay. This is regarding abandoned and nuisance properties.
Yes.
Yes. And the administration is recommending some changes for the penalties for the housing code.
Well, we went over this a little bit last week, and I've had some discussions with the clerk and the law director and the City Service Safety Director. Apparently, the feeling is with the administration that the penalties for having property that is, you know, in decline, and people not taking care of it, just simply aren't sufficient to actually motivate someone to actually go out and do something with their property. The idea here is if you really can't change a person's attitude, at least you can change their behavior somewhat. And looking at this, it's probably about as far, I believe, as the Ohio Revised Code will allow us to go. I believe that's what the law director was saying this afternoon, so... Unless the mayor has anything more to add to that?
No, I don't. You're absolutely correct in what you're saying. I mean, we do have several abandoned or neglected properties in the city of Athens, and it's very difficult to get the property owner to come into compliance. And so we do feel that with oversight from the law director, feel that the language change that you're seeing, I would imagine council has it in front of them right now, that that should certainly help with behavior change as we move forward to try to curb some of these neglected properties.
Blighted, I think it's a good term for it, so...
It is a good term.
Okay, any other comments or questions about this? Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you to the administration for looking into this. I have received numerous emails over the years about property on the West Side and the First Ward that has been neglected indoors and major disrepair. And a lot of nearby residents, whether they be tenants, renters, homeowners, become terribly frustrated and feel very helpless when they feel there's nothing they can do, or if these owners are neglecting the property, and you can't get in touch with them, or they don't live nearby, it can be very frustrating. So thank you for taking forward initiatives with this. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Katsas?
President, nicely, thank you. And so, you know, and forgive me, because I'm an at-large representative, but on my block, I do hear about one specific, you know, house. And so looking at this, you know, looking at the ordinance, so a first offense with a minor misdemeanor and fine not more than $100. Then it goes to a second offense within a two-year period. So what kind of timeframe are we looking at as we're going from first to second to third, third offense? And then I think about this, you know, this one, the one parcel that I keep getting asked about, when something's going to happen, or when can something happen with it? And I, you know, that resident no longer resides here, it seems like they're not, they're not within the state, is my understanding. I mean, you know, I understand that we're trying to change some behavior, but it also seems like, would these fines be tacked on to the taxes? Or how, you know, how is this, how are these getting issued, I guess?
That I can find out for you in terms of how the fines are being levied against these properties, whether it's being attached to their taxes, or is it direct to them? I mean, these are misdemeanor charges as you go up. If you read through them, as I believe they're before you, you know, any person violating the same offense subsequently shall be found guilty of a fourth-degree misdemeanor for a second offense, a third-degree misdemeanor, a third degree for a third offense, a second degree for a fourth offense, and a final fine of not more than $1,000, and up to 30 days in jail.
Is the question then, though, about this third line down in the sentence of the proposed penalties, that the second offense, that you wait to two years?
I believe it's within.
Within, yes, within, yeah.
Within. Okay. Councilmember Burgrais?
I think sort of along the same lines, it's like, well, if, how much time is the property owner given in order to, like, rectify things before a second offense could be issued?
I can find that out for you.
So, you know, like, that's an issue that's brought up to me several times. Well, you know, this property owner has been notified that something they've done is in violation of code, and they are told they have to correct it, but how long do they have to correct it before then a second offense? And obviously, depending on the offense, different timeframes may be reasonable, but that's, I think that's a recurring issue here, is that enforcing compliance is somewhat difficult. And so how quickly could that second offense reasonably be issued? And so...
I will find that out for you. That might, that information might already exist in 29-09.
Yeah, it could be in other sections of it, depending on what the offense is.
All right, we'll find that out.
Councilmember McGee?
I was wondering whether it's possible, this seems to be a reoccurring theme when it comes to snow and ice removal, but for rentals in particular, whether it's possible to amend the code to require, or to provide that where landlords are not living up to the code, and including the snow and ice removal, that the city would have the option at that point in time to renovate this, or cut the grass, or do the snow and ice removal, and to charge a fee to the water? Because as Pete had kind of mentioned, I think what we tend to do is spin around and do a lot of notices and charge people money with fines, and the problem never gets rectified. And for a situation like snow and ice removal, where you're talking about danger to pedestrians, I think we should do our utmost, and it would seem like this would certainly be a way to bring this into the equation there.
Councilmember Reisner?
I just want to get clarified here from Councilmember McGee. Are you suggesting an amendment to this?
I think it's ripe for the kind of amendment that would say that, that would put something in it that anyone who obtains a housing permit through the city of Athens consents as part of the permit to allow the city to assess fees for situations where they're found to be in violation of the code, either for repair of the property, or for, again, for snow or ice removal. So I think we need to do something with that.
Well, I would agree, but I don't think that this particular piece of legislation that we're discussing here, the topic, has anything to do with what you're suggesting. That would be a separate...
And Council, Clerk of Council Debbie Walker is informing us that that's in another part of code already.
Okay, okay, well...
Okay.
We can do a double, we can do a double check for you. Certainly a valid point, but there's, yeah.
It is in a different section of code, but I hear what you're saying. I really do. You know, because if you've got a, if you have an abandoned property, then you're not clearing your snow and ice as well. Why would you? But they should. So hear me saying that. So, but it is, it is in code already. I can't remember whether it's in Title IX or Title VII, but I know it's there, possibly V. But I'll look at that, too. It is something worth bringing up, and it's timely, since...
Would it include this? Do we know these?
No, this is under Title 29, so we'll...
No, I'm asking if this is implied or not, or not keeping the property up to code, is my understanding. Would the current situation allow, if somebody doesn't, say, mow their grass or something, allow the city to do so?
I think we currently practice that. We do, we do, yes.
That does happen.
But the difficulty is, is how far can you stretch code staff to be going out and mowing a lot of places and then trying to recoup the money? Snow removal is covered in 9.12.19 on our code, so, okay. Any other questions about this particular...
Well, I just want to point out something, that the way this is written is that if a property owner has an offense, whatever that may be, the house needs repaired, they repair it, if they get a second offense within two years, okay, then that, then the misdemeanor goes to a fourth degree. So it's not like I correct the problem and I get, get out a jail-free card. Now, I'm on sort of a probationary period for two years. If I do it again, I get slapped with a bigger fine, and it escalates from there, so...
Again, I will, I will look at this particular code, Title 29, and see if there's language in there that speaks to how much time someone has to address the problem. You know, it could be 30 days, in which case, if it was, and I'm not saying that it is, but if it were 30 days to comply, and it hasn't, compliance hasn't been achieved, then they could be cited again, and now it starts going fourth degree, third degree, second degree, and it could be, you know, six months in a row, five months in a row, and you could potentially, you know, be incarcerated for this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. And any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay.
Let me, let me just share, if I may, President, nicely. Again, where this came from to chain, make this change was through the International Town Gown Association, and I just share that with you, in that here's how important the International Town Gown Association conference is, to where you're learning from other municipalities and things that are going on. There was something, there was a presentation there from, I believe it was Michigan State and East Lansing, and it was something that Director Stone was sitting in on that session, and it was like, oh, this is really interesting in terms of what they are doing with the same problem. And so I just share, like I said, to tell you how invaluable the International Town Gown Association is for learning what other people might be doing, as well as sharing what we're doing. This particular piece of legislation, this legislation change, this amendment, came from that.
Good, good to know the background on it. Okay. If no other comments, then we'll move on to the Transportation Committee, and that will be Councilmembers Katsas, McGee, and Crowell, and it'll give the other council members a chance to stretch and move. Since this is our first committee meeting back since our recess, it's getting into the routine again. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready? And this is going to be a very short and sweet Transportation Committee this evening, because we only have one, one point to talk about, which is street paving and repairs. So the annual paving is coming up here in the fall of selected streets in our, in our city, and this legislation that is being proposed to be first read next week is changing the dollar amounts and where they're coming from. So basically, I did have a conversation with EPW Director Robert Hedy this afternoon, and what this is doing is, we have a, we have a cash flow problem, and it is because of some of our, some of our other larger projects that are kind of looming, so we don't have the money in the pots where they usually are. And so this is just changing the mix, it's not changing the, the project. So we are, you know, my understanding is that all the streets that were listed as being up for paving are going to be still paved, it's just that the money that we were expecting to have in the wheel tax fund, and also the street rehabilitation fund, isn't there because of the West Union Design Project that's going on right now, and then also the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Project. So we have monies committed to those other projects, which, which is changing how we need to have this, how this looks on the books moving forward.
Questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
Could you explain that in a little more detail as far as how the Richland Avenue Project would be affecting the paving if they're still going to be paved?
Well, the, yes, and actually, that's, that's the easy one for me to explain, because they have had to put money forward for design and engineering.
Right.
And they have, they have money that is pledged by OU that we had to spend upfront that is not present in our coffers yet. And so, so my understanding is, is that Director Stone has, has made that request to the university to, to determine when that payment can come, and if we can...
It's all right, Jim.
It's all right. If that, if that can come forward a little bit sooner to, to help alleviate this, this cash crunch.
Thank you.
So, and I, and I do see, I don't know if you've been in any conversations, Auditor Heck, about this?
I sure have.
Okay.
Basically, a cash flow issue. So we're moving money around. Tax money comes in regularly, and that is the main source of revenue for the Street Rehab Fund, and partially for the Street Fund. And then, of course, the wheel tax funds are special funds that get a limited amount of money anyway. And so the money we've projected through the end of the year that we base our projects on is not in there yet. We're just over halfway through the year. And the Richland Avenue Project was intended to be done before now, and it hasn't happened. And so we've committed money, because we have to do that, to get the matches from ODID and wherever else we might be getting funds. So we've committed that to them, and so it's spoken for, and we can't use that money right now. And so we have figured out a way to unencumber some money that we encumbered this year. It's harder when we've encumbered the money in a previous year, and we often do for these projects, they take time. So anyway, we've come up with, with a solution, and by the end of the year, the money that we will need in other areas should be there.
Councilmember McGee?
My understanding from what the mayor said is, has said when we had our pothole problems before, was that we have to have the paving done by a certain time for the asphalt to stay warm?
Sure.
And you're saying by the end of the year, this money would be freed up? Is that going to be a problem with, with our...
No, the money for the paving is there now.
Yes.
We've just, we encumbered some of it. Stimson was one of the projects, and then, of course, Richland Union Street. So we've unencumbered it because we're not going to spend it right away. We will spend it on this project, and by the end of the year, that money will be replaced in our funds and can be reencumbered for those projects that aren't going to happen by the end of the year. Does that make sense?
So you're freeing up some previously obligated money?
Right.
To be able to do the paving, so that happens before the cold weather, and then when the other tax money flows back in, we will have the cash flow replenished.
And part of it, when the other cash flow is, as Member Katsas mentioned, is OU, and often grants are reimbursable, and we have to come up with the money to pay the bills in advance, which can be difficult. So as he said, the Service Safety Director is, or maybe has by now, I don't know, approached OU, because typically, we pay for it, and then they reimburse us, when we show proof of the work, and, you know, it makes sense, but at this point, we might need to get some of that money in advance, so that our Street Fund isn't stretched too tight.
Probably reimbursing.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then, Mayor?
Two questions. One is, the total amount is $48,000 less than the previously, the previous ordinance. Is there something that's been cut from the plans, certain streets that we should be aware of, that are, will not be paved because of that lesser amount, or...
I don't know the specifics, I wasn't under that impression, but...
I'm not either. You know, I don't think that the street list has been cut. As you know, there's the primary list, and then there's alternate lists, so...
Right, so we never saw a specific, this is what's going to happen. We saw a list of possibilities. So I don't know how much that got pared down, or what we're all hoping gut was on there. And then my other question is, I was under the understanding that the Ohio University portions of the paving were going to be done before school starts? That's not the case now?
I think that would be the objective, whether that'll happen or not.
Are we still, this is, we have three readings to...
Oh, and that was a question I didn't ask, if there, is there any suspension necessary on this?
I don't know that we do need to suspend that, but I'll check on that.
We should just check on that, because I think I've received in another committee meeting the information that this was being done, this week or next, FYI.
Well, the thing is, that ordinance, we're amending an ordinance that's already passed, and a lot of this money is already encumbered for the project.
But good question, whether it's going to be completed, yeah.
So, yeah.
It's your turn.
To that question, you know, in terms of paving before move-in occurs, we just had a meeting this morning. I hold my safety meeting every Monday morning with my safety staff to include the Director of Engineering and Public Works. So Director Hedy was talking to me and said that there was some delays, and it seemed like it was, it was some shuffling on OU's side with that particular milling and repaving, so there's still... So there's still some things going on right now as we speak, and trying to make sure that that's coordinated to have that done. But I think there's some things on the OU side that need to be ironed out first, in terms of that paving. So it's up in the air as to whether it'll be, what the timeframe's going to look like for move-in, which is coming up quickly.
That's difficult, and that's always the goal, but it just doesn't always happen. Sometimes the weather intervenes, and so, as the mayor said, they're trying to work that out, but.
As long as there's some coordination. I mean, obviously, Southside Drive is going to be, that was one of the areas, and that's obviously a major artery at that time of year, so.
Want to coordinate? No, and I hear you. I agree with you, because everyone is also well aware, especially those of us who are Southsiders, that the Richland Avenue Bridge is still under construction, and with move-in, that's going to be, that unto itself will be a challenge, I think, to a degree.
So we are going to get clarified, the difference that Councilmember Crowell brought up, the difference between 750,000, now down to 702,000, that's $48,000 less. But we're still going to get all the same streets repaved?
And I will put that request out to Director Hetty. I'll copy the mayor to just get in stone exactly the street list, so we know what's going on.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
We'll move on to Finance and Personnel. That's Councilmember Reisner as Chair, and Councilmember Butler, Crowell, and Kotzis.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance and Personnel Committee, we have four bullet points, appropriations and transfers, staffing amendment, income tax delinquent debt collection, and accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission, general property tax. Appropriation and transfers. I'm looking here at a ordinance to amend the 2019 appropriation ordinance. So Section 1, the 2019 appropriation ordinance, 14018, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $20,000 to Street Fund, 220, transaction code 300 for dead and dying tree removal, and $65,000 to CDBG RLF Fund, 249, TC 300, and $500 to Garbage Fund, 760.636. Transaction code 600 to process a refund and increase the total appropriations by set amount. We have both the mayor and the auditor here, if they need to speak on these. Anyone have any questions?
Acronyms, the CDBG is the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and I believe that's a revolving loan.
It is. Okay. It is. I love abbreviations. Madam Auditor?
I can speak to that one a little bit, just for explanation. President Nysley was right. We have two CDBG funds that we get, and they're both revolving loan funds, or called. We have two agreements. One is for economic development, which we have used to loan to businesses over the years. We actually ended up using it to purchase Arts West as an economic development tool. The other one is the, we call LMI, Low to Moderate Income Housing Development Fund, 248 and 249 are the two funds. And that one is where we run our chip money through. HAPCAP administers that for us, and those involved, sometimes low-income deposits, you know, housing deposits, but mostly rehab. And so we have some money sitting there, because we get program income from the low-income houses that we have around town. We have four, I don't think we're getting, we're getting rid of, disposing of two on Blackburn Road. I don't think that's gone through quite yet, I don't know. And so we get program income from those, and it's been building up over the years. We haven't used it. And so the Service Safety Director has looked at that in ways that we can use that for things that we are having trouble finding money to do right now. And so there are some houses, talking about housing, and dilapidated, abandoned housing, and we do have some that are in the condemnation process. And when we tear them down, we can assess the landowner through their property taxes. But that process is a 10-year assessment to get that money back. And in reality, we don't really have the money to pay $50,000 to tear three houses down upfront, and then wait 10 years to get our money back. So we're trying to access that money. We, you know, we have to go through a process to ask for permission. We might not get it, but in the meantime, if we can, and the council has, you know, moved the ordinance along, the money will be ready to go as soon as we can. Because when we're at this level, they're really bad. And at least one of them is on a main entrance into the city, and so we're kind of asking for this money in hopes that we will get approval to use it for this. We will still assess the landowner, because we're not paying for people's personal property to tear down, you know, dilapidated buildings for them. But this way, we're not dipping into our other monies to pay for it upfront.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me share as well. Thank you, Auditor Heck, that was perfect, in terms of what we're doing. But I do want to remind council that there was a house that was demoed within the last couple of years on one of our major gateways. And that, the money to have that house demolished came right out of the Code Office's budget. And this would alleviate that, so that it's not the Code and the General Fund that's paying for this. It's coming through the CDBG RLF Fund. And some of these properties, we are tracking to see whether they are tax delinquent properties. And as I understand it, as of last month, one of these properties in particular was not tax delinquent, which is good, because it doesn't mean that we're behind anybody else in any liens on the property as we move forward, using the RLF funding to do this. As Kathy indicated, we have spoken to Mr. Glenn Crippen up at HAPCAP, and at least having him reach out to his contacts. I know that the auditor has reached out to contacts as well, as to what is a legitimate use of the RLF funding, and this is one of those, especially with blighted properties that can now hopefully get back on the free and clear for property reuse, and hopefully get some new homes built, or green space, or something in some of these. Their challenge, I mean, and some of this, as you're aware, is where the land bank came from. These aren't land bank, these are, we're doing this internally. But, yeah, this is, I think, I think this is a proper way to move forward when it comes to the few properties that we do have in the City of Athens that are blighted properties.
Any questions, council? Members of the audience, council members out there? Okay, well, we'll proceed with this next week. Staffing amendments. There's actually a series of three ordinances here that all have to do with the same topic. First one ordinance would be to, so Section 1 ordinance 4218, staffing levels, is hereby amended to change the position of landscaper to head landscaper. The next ordinance would be authorizing the City Service Safety Director to increase pay for certain employees having to do with this. And then the next ordinance would be ordinance 7116, non-union pay grades, is hereby amended to add head landscaper to pay grade three. Will the auditor care to talk about this? I know you mentioned that you had some concerns. At least you did last week.
I did, and I still do. I understand the reasoning behind this, is we've had a retirement, and the Service Safety Director's trying to save money and not replace that position. And so he has requested these changes to adjust some other positions and give pay increases and a new title on one of them. And I'm not opposed to that, however. Those of you who remember 2016, when we went through a process to come up with a current compensation plan, that there were processes and rules associated with that, and it is in our current fringe benefit package, that it's supposed to be reviewed every three to five years. I feel like the 10% and 15% pay increases, I personally, but really, it's up to council to accept this proposal. But I would think that you would want to see a new job description and some justification for the pay raises. One of them would put the employee over the max in that pay grade, and, which can't happen, and we know how that works for other people, but we also can't promise that person at the end of the year, or the beginning of next year, they'll get a bonus, or however council decides to deal with that, because that's up to council. And I think that the pay raises, while they might be reasonable, they're a lot. When you consider, we really don't give anybody more than 2% and have it for years, and even in our ordinance, someone who becomes the supervisor over in a department that they've been in is only guaranteed to make 5% over the people under them, these are pretty big jumps. And I just think that after what we went through, the employees were all interviewed, we completed a questionnaire, we were given points, there's a point system of why, of how many points we got, determined where in the pay grades that position would fall. We were all interviewed individually, and so there's a process for changing positions this dramatically, you know, to go from not supervising and supervising three or four people, bumping up to grades, 15% increase. It might be justified, but I think there should be some written justification and a job description to go along with this new position. That will become a new position in our staffing ordinance. And same with the other ones. So that would be my request, that council would look at what's being requested and the amounts that are, I think if you're going to give somebody a 10% or 15% increase, that, you know, you should know what they're going to do for that amount. We're talking $2, $3 an hour. So even the highest paid person we're looking at, who's been here quite a while, the one that would be bumped into a, over the max amount for that pay grade, a 2% raise would be 55 cents an hour. So we're talking about a big difference, you know, five and six times what an annual raise would be. And I just think that it can't be just be somebody saying, let's just move these people up and give them these duties, and, you know, I think there should be something in writing to justify why they're where they are, and the pay increases.
Well, it seemed to me, looking at this, that if you're going to bump the pay up 10% or 15%, yet you're, they're keeping the employee title the same, and I can't see, it seems to me you're changing the position. It's no longer what it was. It's something, it's now something else.
That's my feeling. Sometimes we make minor changes that don't necessarily make that much of a difference, and the pay doesn't necessarily bump up like this. But yes, they're changing. The one that's going to be, part of the reason he would be over the max is because he's been here quite a while, but his responsibilities are going to be much greater, and it's not even just supervising more people, it's a lot more duties. You know, should that be reviewed, to see if he should bump up a grade and not just keep his same title? He's one that wouldn't change his title.
Yeah, that's what, it seems to me that's where we're at, sort of at. I mean, in 2016, we created the whole system to sort of avoid what this is.
Just picking people and giving, you know, duties and.
Right. It can't be done by fiat, it has to be, there's a process behind all this, so.
Right. And I think in the end, you know, it might be fine, but I also think that out of fairness to these employees.
Yeah. I'm not objecting to it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and the reasoning, I get it.
Yeah.
But I think out of fairness to these employees. Like I said, that one employee, depending on how different his job will be, should possibly go up a pay grade.
Yeah.
And.
That might be the best way to approach this.
So, you know, it's just something to think about.
I'm not opposed to this.
Well, and in the Service Safety Director's email, he talked about job descriptions. But I feel like, if I was still on council, I'd want to see the job descriptions before I agreed to these kinds of raises and changes.
I had to agree with that.
Positions.
I agree, too.
Yeah.
So, those are my comments.
We'll get you the job description. For everybody.
Yeah, let's get it out there, and let's chew this thing out. And I think the suggestion, thanks for pointing that out, that the package that we put together in 2016, that was three years ago, this is 2019, so we're in the three-to-five-year review period. We should, at this point, start looking seriously at it again, and say, okay, what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be changed? What did we do right, what did we do wrong? What's working, what isn't? In general, there's a general review of it. So I'm amenable for the Finance Committee to start looking into that anytime that the administration wants to start. It was a mess the last time, but it shouldn't be that bad this time, so.
I would recommend it be the first thing we do as we roll into 2020. We've got a lot of things on our plate between now and the end of the year. But we could start that process, for sure.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't imagine that being concluded anytime quickly, because as Auditor Heck was saying, it was a long process that we went through. You know, it was ratified in 2016, but the process was going on in 2015.
Yeah, it was about 14 months.
It was a long process.
Yeah.
Is there occasion that we have contact with Clemmons and Nelson, the firm that assisted us with this, that could be used on a, in this particular instance, before we start the entire evaluation?
They are on retainer.
Rather than.
We pay them a monthly amount for phone calls and emails.
And we don't necessarily want to delay this until we've done the entire city evaluation, but certainly use their expertise.
Right, and I understand why they want this done by the end of the year, the position, the retirement has already happened, and, you know, I understand all that, but I think that before you actually do it, you should maybe do the process that we used before, and then the whole, the whole plan should be looked at. But yes, and, you know, and as I said, Clemmons Nelson is on retainer and could be involved, you know, even if it's just phone calls and emails, and the HR director should be involved, you know, in these jobs without, you know, just a little more detail about why we want to do what we're doing. Because once we do that, it's very hard to go back, if we realize maybe we got carried away on this person, you know.
Right. Well, we don't need to set a precedent if we don't need to.
Well, that's another thing. I don't like the precedent, and I think that you, I would think you would want it to be fair to the other employees who are looking at their positions and what they do, and like, why did they do that for him, and things like that. And if you have something in writing, you know, well, we've added these duties on to this person, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Well, we'll get you back up there again. Income tax, delinquent debt collection. I saw we have a letter from Yoast somewhere on our drive.
I sent you their information and the agreement, and this would be for the Attorney General to collect delinquent income taxes. Now, we have a process and procedures that we go through. We send a certain number of letters, based so far apart, we give them deadlines, and there are some people who still don't pay, and. And sometimes it's hard for us to track them down. And so we have some hanging out there. The Law Director's office has actually been wonderful about supporting us and filing suit in civil court. And, but still, people move, sometimes it's hard to find them. And so the Attorney General's office has this program, which court came to council and asked to use last year. It's the same contract with a different name in it. And it doesn't cost us anything. And so we tell them what they owe. We give them support for that, you know, proof that they owe us whatever amount of money. And then that's it. We can't go in and say, oh, we found they owe another $2,000. That would have to be a separate filing. And we would still go through our process of sending delinquent letters with timeframes to reply, chances for them to argue what we put in the letter that they owe and things like that. And so they charge 10% on top of what we are asking for, for their services. So it doesn't come out of our funds that we want to recoup. So we really almost have nothing to lose. And I haven't heard any complaints from court. And so, you know, you'd be surprised how much money is floating around out there. And in the years, off and on, early on more, we're better about it now. But the state auditors expect us to collect money that's owed to us. Money to the city is, that's part of our responsibility is to collect that money. We have a lot of people who are paying taxes. And, but some of them can get quite high, especially when they let it go for years. So...
We've had other agencies or firms do collections for us in the past.
Yeah, we have. The CCA was a good program and we might want to try that again, but it's a little bit different. They have access to IRS filings. So what they help us find are people who have additional income that they reported to the federal government, but they aren't reporting to us because we don't know about it. And most of the time, they don't realize that they should be doing that. But any eligible income should be taxed for people that are, you know, responsible for city income taxes. So it's a little bit different than this one and...
But we are active about trying to collect the money that's owed to us. It's not like we're just sort of doing nothing about it.
We are. So besides the fact that we need it, we are supposed to do that. And we do have to show them a process. We have what we call tickler files. So when we send a letter, we give them 10 days to respond. If they don't, we send a second one and different things that happen. And, you know, the auditors don't like if we wait 30 days and, you know, let them drag it out because that's really not how it's supposed to work. If they owe it, they owe it and things like that. So I would appreciate it if council would pass an ordinance similar to what court had last year so that we can try it out anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't see any reason why not. Any questions, council or the audience about this? Okay. Last item, accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission, general property tax. We do this every year, don't we?
We do.
And let's see.
Debbie can explain this one as well as I can, but she has to deal with it too. So every year we have to pass, the council has to pass a resolution accepting the rates that the county Budget Commission has given us for our inside millage for property taxes is what it is. And...
And this has to do with the fact that Athens City occupies most of Athens Township and part of Kanan Township. And consequently, we're doing the work that those trustees would normally be doing and we should get reimbursed for it.
Right.
Because that's essentially...
We get our share of taxes that are within the city limits.
Right.
And some of it is right in two townships and it's spelled out there. And there's a pretty involved process for how those inside millages are assessed, millages, villages. And, you know, we don't get all the money that is paid in property taxes. So there, excuse me, there's a process there and so...
Does any of this go towards cemetery maintenance?
Well, it can. We can use it however we want. But not necessarily.
Okay.
No, that's something we're still working on is funding for cemeteries.
Just kind of hoping somewhere.
So, and then just for the record, it's due October 1st, but we'll have three readings on this, which we never had for several years when council took a recess in August because we never get the paperwork till the very end of July. And we never had time to start it until they came back in September, so.
Okay. Any questions about this piece of legislation, audience? Well, that's all for finance and personnel.
Okay. City and Safety Services Committee is next. Councilmember Butler and Grace. Councilmember Falls not with us tonight, but she's on the committee as well.
Thank you, President Nysley. We do have one item that is on the agenda this evening underneath City Service Safety Committee. I believe that Councilmember Grace, when she's prepared with the mic, will be addressing this particular talking point. And it is regarding the JPAC barbecue and street closing.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Butler. JPAC is the Joint Police Advisory Council and is an organization that works to bring together members of the community, members of the student population, and in a casual, non-confrontational setting to meet with members of our local law enforcement, the Athens Police Department and Ohio University Police Department. And the biggest event of the year is they have a barbecue every fall just after students come back. And this year, JPAC has set their barbecue date for Wednesday, September 18th, and with a rain date of Thursday, the 19th. And we, the council are requesting street closure. The barbecue is held out in front of Baker Center. And we close a portion of Park Place, West Mulberry and Court Street in order to facilitate that. And that will, it's closure from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., I believe, that evening for setup and take down.
And thank you, Councilmember. If I'm correct in remembering my acronyms, this is the Joint Police...
Advisory Council.
Thank you. And this has been a long-running tradition and...
It's a really great event, really well-attended. It's Kaiser's barbecue. Often the mounted officers come and sometimes canine. And it's a really, a nice setting for people to interact, both members of the community and the student body and the law enforcement. And so I encourage everyone to attend. It is open to all members of the community. And again, it's September 18th, hopefully. 19th if it's raining, 5:00 p.m.
And it's a really nice opportunity. It's located near the, right out in front of Baker Center so it makes it comfortable for the students. What I think that would be really important is to send that message. It's an opportunity for the community to let the students know that we're glad that they're here. And it's a nice setting. It's easy, it's informal, it's casual, it's friendly. And so I know we've always, the Joint Police Advisory Council has always worked to try and get more community involvement. And we really would appreciate that. It could stand to be a few more people from the community out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Nysley, that was the only item this evening and that concludes my committee.
Thank you very much. We'll stand adjourned at 8:22 p.m. Thank you.